Hey, hey. Hey, welcome to another episode of the Teachers' Lounge Talk Show. I'm your host, Mrs. Piper. It's so wonderful to be here at the mothership known as WHPR TV thirty-three Highland Park, Michigan. You're in a drive, a financial drive. Please support this station. Give all you can. I know I will. It's so wonderful to have everyone here. I gotta say a shout out to Facebook. Hello, Facebook.
What's up, Facebook?
I'd say hello to you first before we get started. Started, we want to say thank you so much to Minister Malik Shabazz and to Get Up! and Stand Up! Show for sharing this platform with the Teachers' Lounge Talk Show for the four years that we have been on this mighty, mighty station. We also want to thank Brother David Mohammed at Available Geeks for sponsoring the Teachers' Lounge Talk Show for the four years we have been on WHPR TV. Just to remind you all, it is so important that educators have a voice. It is so important that we have our own platform that we control. How are you, Brother Don?
Doing pretty good. I can't complain.
You're looking nice.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Brother Don is gonna be jumping in here a lot because you can hear my voice, right? So, you know what? I'm so happy to be here because we have a big site guest tonight. This young man, Mr. Shannon Smith, is a candidate for our school board, DPSCD School Board, correct? Can you please, Mr. Shannon Smith, please introduce yourself to our audience right in that camera? Let them get a good look at you so they can see this young man, please.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having me. My name is Shannon Smith. I'm a candidate for Detroit Public Schools Community District Board.
Excellent. Now, I gotta ask you, sir. He has been asked over two or three times already, "How old are you?" Because he's very young. You know, I'm ready to, you know, give him a journal, a journal book, student journal book with the new curriculum and tell him to open up so we can start educating. So, I have to ask you, before you even ask, when inspired do you run? Do you think your youthful appearance is a detriment or positive in this endeavor?
Yeah, I think sometimes it is perceived that because I look so young, I may not have enough experience. But then, when I, you know, usually when I open my mouth and start talking about some of the facts, some of the research, and then really talk about my own experience, it's clear that, you know, I, you know, I'm taking this very seriously.
So, this man is grown. Okay, he started speaking. I'm like, oh, he grown. He super grown. So, I have to ask you, sir, why? Why do you want to run for school?
Yeah, so, I mean, first, I'm very passionate about the city of Detroit. I've been here all my life. My family grew up here. My grandmother grew up here. I migrated from Alabama, brought our family up here for better opportunities at a time where there were better opportunities in Detroit. And so, I grew up in, you know, in a family that really, they focused on us getting through school. And my mother, my father, my mother being with death, she made my education a priority. And so, she always pushed me to really go and seek out a better education as a path to a better opportunity. And, you know, I was fortunate enough to go to a magnet school, King High School at the time. And then also, you know, fortunate enough to go off to University of Michigan. And I think it was there, my first year at the University of Michigan, where I started to realize the disparities in education in public, in public schools, private schools, and cities like Detroit. Because this was a melting pot of students from across the globe. And my first year was a challenge for me. And I had to really, you know, mature and step up and take responsibility and ownership into my own education. And really realizing that I had to fill the gaps that the education system at that time wasn't necessarily able to prepare me for at the college level. This was very clear when I came back after studying economics and realizing how much education was important in a growing economy, in a city, state, or country, and the lack of the investment that we had done in Detroit and what that had turned into. And I'm a very analytical person, and so, I like to, you know, use the numbers to really tell the story, but also tell my own story as a part of those numbers. And we're in a city where seventy-eight percent of our students are graduating high school. Forty-one percent of them are going off to college. Thirteen percent of our city is college educated. And this is over time where we've seen this type of investment and the lack of investment in our education system where it's turned out into our workforce. And so, I felt obligated coming back home to do something and to have an impact on our city. And I felt that the most important way that I can really have an impact on Detroit is to fix our education system because that will open up opportunities for students to go and create a world of their own and go into any industry that they wanted to. But first and foremost, we had to create that opportunity for them.
When you were, well, I'm sorry, listen, when you were at Michigan, what did you study? What did you major in?
I studied economics and political science.
Oh, okay. Now, you know, I'm listening to you. And when you talk about the deficits that you had when you went to college. Now, as a teacher, can I ask you, could it have been that the teacher taught with fidelity and you as a student didn't do your part? And maybe you had too much playing when you were in high school? So, when you went to college, yeah, you were lost because maybe you didn't pay attention? Or could it have been, yeah, you just lacked in education because of what DPS gave to you?
Yeah, no, I always had a great relationship with my teachers. And I was always a bright student where I did my, the work that was provided to me. But I was also one of those students that when I got done with my work, I was a distraction to the class. And, you know, I, that was the opportunity to challenge me even more or give me even more opportunity. And I think that's where it became very clear to me. One of the most common things my mother would hear at parentage conference was, "He's a bright student if he just closes his mouth." Like, all the time. Because, you know, I was able to get my work done and get good grades, but I wanted to talk when I didn't have anything to do. So, therefore, I started distracting my peers. And so, I didn't understand the sense of challenging myself to go further than that. You know, there was no more curriculum that I could be given at that point. There were no AP classes at my high school. They were at CAS Tech. And that's another thing that I talk about, you know, when I'm talking about, you know, how we challenge students. Is I think the CAS Tech curriculum should have been at all of our high schools.
Yeah, I'm shocked. King didn't have AP classes?
We didn't have the AP classes that CAS Tech did. Renaissance for that matter.
Oh, wow. Did you have any advanced classes?
We had AP Calculus, and that was it.
Okay, so, okay, I guess you guys had some AP classes, but you didn't have a variety to choose from, like, okay.
Right, so, the thing about King was a portion of it, it was you tested it into a program and not the school. At CAS and Renaissance, you tested it into the entire school. And so, I went to King with neighborhood schools, which is a great experience for me because it very much so kept it really connected to the community for me. And I knew a lot of the neighborhood kids. But I was in a program separate from what they were doing and what they were learning and what CAS and King were learning. So, I mean, CAS Renaissance was learning. So, it was a path that they put us on, but there was nothing beyond that, you know? So, there was no classes I could take on the other side of the, on the side of King that word in the American style. I was in a particular program, international studies and calculus.
Okay, okay. It's interesting. So, I'm curious, when you ran off the call, we're gonna get to the school board in a moment. I'm just really curious. So, you went to college, you realized there was a deficit. And I'm sure any young person that's watching and you're on your way to college, there's probably gonna be a lag. I know I did. I lagged, right? And had to take a math one-on-one, you know what I mean, by doing, teaching you fractions, right?
I took math one-on-one.
Yeah, yeah, right? So, you know, I'm just curious, when you were up against that deficit, what in you made you want to rise and not quit? Because a lot of us, you know, we drop out when we get to college because it's too hard. So, what intensity or fortitude did you have that you were like, oh, I'm not quitting. I'm sticking with this. And look right in that camera, so any young person that's listening can learn from you.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, hey, this is a reality. What I told myself is, I didn't know, I didn't know my path without my education. I didn't understand what opportunities that I would have if I didn't educate myself. You know, the school system taught me in a traditional, the traditional way of, you know, the curriculum that they wanted to teach me. But it also challenged me to be a critical thinker and think outside the box and be analytical and to really analyze things in my own way. I don't think I would have gotten that without the structure of education. And so, that was my fortitude, understanding that this is my path to really creating the world that I want to live in and create opportunities for myself. And ultimately, you know, in my head at that time, it was just as simple as buying my mother a house when I got out of school.
I'm gonna say, I admire you, Mr. Smith. You're a young man. You got your head on your shoulders. And you have a lot vested in the city of Detroit. You grew up here. He's homegrown. He graduated from one of our elite high schools. So, I'm just curious, if you were elected, what would you change within DPSCD?
Sure. So, there are three areas that I, you know, just through research and just through conversations that I realized that, you know, would be my focus areas and really setting a benchmark and/or a gauge for where they are, students, teachers in the classrooms. And that's been my platform since I started. The status of students, are they getting the curriculum that will prepare them for college? Are they getting the opportunity that will expose them to careers? Teachers, do we respect our teachers the way we should? I wouldn't be where I am today without a number of teachers who invested time and energy into me. Are we being, are we reciprocating that on the other end from a system level? Are we giving the professional development opportunity to have upward advancement in the school system and then the classrooms? Are we creating a classroom environment that's welcoming to students? We know a lot of where a lot of students come from in their own housing environments, in their own neighborhoods. Are we creating a welcoming center in our school system, in our education centers in those schools that kids want to come into? In addition to that, are we creating, are we connecting them to the classroom experience outside of school? Internships, job shadowing opportunities, mentors, are we doing that? Are we intentional about that? And those are things that I want to make sure that we are doing at the school board level. There's a lot of interest in Detroit. There's a lot of talk about our revitalization. But I'm of the opinion that this revitalization stops short of a true revitalization until we focus on our education system. There is no recovery in Detroit if we have no strong education system. Parents don't, parents don't have a place to send their children. Corporations and companies that are moving here, they don't have a talent pipeline.
Go on, caller.
And students, quite frankly, won't see a path for themselves to get better opportunity in our education system if it's not preparing that for them.
So, we want to encourage you at home to get involved in this conversation. We have Mr. Shannon Smith, school board candidate. Give us a call at three one three eight six eight oh three four two or three one three eight six eight oh three five one. Our final call-in number is three one three eight six eight four three three six. We're gonna go to our calls. Caller, welcome to the Teachers' Lounge. You are speaking with school board candidate for Detroit Public Schools Community District, Mr. Shannon Smith.
He's in the room, teachers.
Hello, how you saying?
This is Shannon Smith. Hi, I'm doing as well. One question that I didn't have as well, might be a couple of questions. It's fantastic that you're so young and that you're black and you're going to go and you're still a community member. But what makes you think that you have this spirit to be able to fight and go be defending what you stand on with people that's older, parents, teachers, other politicians? And they come to you and confront you or even discuss with you? That you are young, you don't have no experience? What makes you think that you have that, that spirit and type of strength that'll make you overcome those type of difficulties at which more than likely you'll end up coming from?
Excellent question. Give us the answer.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you, caller.
And, you know, I'll just start with one thing that I have, you know, I understand that is consistent.
Go on, caller.
Consistent across our city is there's not one person in this city that doesn't want a better education system. There's not one parent in this city that doesn't want a quality education for their student. And I think, you know, just age aside, we need to figure out how to basically improve our education system. You know, me being so close and connected to coming out of school and I've been able to understand how we can take best practices from other cities, other states, other countries, on how they basically prepare their students and prepare their village for that matter to prosper through the education system. And that's my priority. I have a niece and nephew, just like many parents have kids and nieces and nephews. And, I mean, everyone is, I'm a mentor in this community where I just want to see us all succeed. All I see now is a Detroit that is starting to become, at its beginning stages of being divided. I mean, we see what downtown and midtown is looking like. I walk past and walk on my way to the office, and I see construction sites that don't have people that look like us on it. And that, that is what gave me the passion. I see, you know, new wealth being created in a city that doesn't look like us. And I go back to a neighborhood I grew up in, Cody Ridge, and I see, you know, families who have stayed there for twenty, thirty years. And, you know, they are not seeing this recovery. And they sent their kids to the public school system, just like my parents and my grandparents' parents did. And so, this intergenerational bridge is something that, you know, I'm prepared to cross. And I'm prepared to have these conversations. I take the wisdom from my grandmother and my mother and listen to them at every step of the way. And, you know, I'm not arrogant and think I know it all. The knowledge that I got was from someone that was older than me. And I'm ready to step up and be a leader in the community like my community encouraged me to and step up where we need to, and I think it's in our education system.
You have interest, my friend, because we have enough callers. Caller, welcome to the Teachers' Lounge. You are speaking to school board candidate Shannon Smith. Go ahead, caller.
Yeah, actual caller, please. I must agree.
Can you be a little louder, caller, please?
Yes, you know, back in I C N R.
Oh, what's up, Mr. Weir? Oh, this is our co-host, Mr. Weir, calling in. How's it going, man?
Pretty good. Calling in as long as I'm here. I'll be looking tonight. Very happy, my boy, my guy. I just, my real quick question. Um, my thing is that we have school board people, we have our staff, people that are coming through who are spinning the curriculum. And I just thought that they could connect with the students. What is your take on, uh, cultural?
That's an excellent question.
The original, what kind of curriculum would you see, uh, do you envision? As a, as a, as a curriculum that the last time of that process? Or maybe a paper? It's kind of, nobody talks with teachers about what the, or the, the original, they're not, they don't know.
Man, thank you so much, brother Will. Yay! All right.
Yeah, so, as far as the curriculum, you know, I think we definitely need to have a curriculum in place that is consistent across our system, but also a curriculum that will prepare students to do well at the secondary level, whether that is a career certification or a college level. But also, something that I was always critical of my own curriculum about is, I want to have a curriculum that's tangible, something that kids can see connected to careers. Math that is connected to engineering, science that's connected to healthcare, medicine. You know, art that is connected to, you know, the business of art, you know? Being more intentional about that. And I think that's how we leverage our community around us, where we have a lot of people in professions and a lot of people that are really encouraged about giving back to our school system because they want to, you know, roll up their sleeves and give back to Detroit. We just have to give them the opportunity to do that. So, the curriculum, I think, you know, one of my biggest things that I would really like to see is that we make a curriculum that kids can see that is in real life. How am I gonna use these math problems I'm learning now? How am I gonna use geometry in real life? That's a question I know a lot of kids ask in school. And so, I think we should be ready to answer that for them.
Yeah, that's excellent. That's an excellent statement. And I think that's where your youth is a positive in the position of a school board candidate. You, because you're so connected with the youth. And like you said, you're just getting out of college, not too long. How long you been out of college?
Six years.
Six years out of college? Well, nonetheless, you're still a fairly young man. And the point that I'm trying to make is, when you connect the curriculum with, uh, with the availability of jobs or career, when you connect the curriculum to careers, it makes learning easier. Because I know as a student, I didn't do the best in some subjects, and it was because I didn't see the connection. For example, when it was time to learn geometry or algebra two, it took me a while to catch on. And, you know, and I did what I had to do to pass. But my whole thing was, what am I ever gonna use the Pythagorean theorem?
Right.
Why do I, why do I need this? So, that's a, that's a good point you made. And seeing as though, you know, you're so not too far removed from the school element, you can really help build a curriculum or even pick out a curriculum. You came along at a good time when we're no longer under a financial emergency, emergency management.
We do have another caller. And we just want to encourage all viewers, all registered voters, give us a call. Three one three eight six eight oh three four two or three one three eight six eight oh three five one. Our final call-in number is three one three eight six eight four three three six. Caller, welcome to the Teachers' Lounge. You are speaking to school board candidate for Detroit Public Schools Community District, Mr. Shannon Smith.
Good evening, Shannon. Can I call you Shannon?
Yeah, sure. Good evening.
Okay. I am so sorry that I have already voted because I won't be out of town. I'm gonna be out of town. I would have voted for you, young man, but I'm gonna remember you. Um, the way you are expressing yourself in depth, knowledge, your passion you have about education, in a fair world, you would be the state superintendent. You would be the superintendent of Detroit Public Schools today. You know what I'm saying? But I still am very impressed with you, and I wish you the best. But I have one question for you. Um, today I got an email from Wayne State University announcing a black football tailgate party October twentieth. Now, Wayne State also has a graduation program for black students. Um, what do you think about that kind of, uh, separation type of activity involving race? From my perspective, I think it hides racism and allows it to flourish. But anyway, what do you think about that if you want to?
Caller, before you leave, listen, I understand you're out of town. I want to encourage you. Tell your friends and your family that are in town, vote Shannon Smith. You got my vote.
I will.
Please, spread the word about this young man.
I'm gonna turn that email blast out for you.
Yes. Thank you so much, caller.
And I'll just say, just about the affinity groups that you speak of. I, you know, I think college, college universities are, you know, for a lot of, you know, kids who are from communities of color. Especially myself, it's a culture shock, you know, when you come, go on these universities. And you are, you know, you come from a school that was predominantly black or predominantly, you know, brown. And you are now in the minority, and you kind of see your place or where you are in America, right? Like, we are the minority in America. And that was like my transition into Michigan. And what was comforting for me is to know that there were other, you know, black and brown students who also felt that way, and we had something in common to discuss. And we had a support system amongst us that will help us and hold us each other accountable. Because I will be, you know, I'll be very clear. And, you know, in my college experience, I made sure that I got a group of black men, young black men, and that we held each other accountable. We went to the library together. We looked out for each other when we went out, and that was important. Do I think I could have found that in another race? Of course, I think I could have. But our experiences were very similar in our first conversations that we immediately connected. I have white friends. I have, you know, Asian friends. You know, I have friends who are not minorities and not black. But, you know, I don't have many friends who grew up in Detroit and went to DPS and went to a university like University of Michigan and/or University for that matter, who are black, who are not black, I would say. And so, that type of connectivity is important on universities like that. I mean, and look at Michigan, I mean, not Michigan, Wayne State, where they've gone through a period where they had a diversity problem of getting people, students of color. Those types of groups advocate for more students of color. But we need to increase the diversity on those types of campuses. And it's the same thing that on Michigan, the Black Student Union did when they saw the numbers for minorities, particularly black minorities at the University of Michigan going down to a low of four percent. They started advocating. They started marching. And they started demanding more representation from their own community because they know that America is starting to become more brown. And we need that type of representation. I don't think it's exclusive.
Okay. And I don't either. If anything, if I know that, you know, all the black people, come on out. To me, it's like I can kick back, you know? I don't have to, I could drop my dip phone, you know, and I can chill.
It's supposed to get though.
Oh, I'm from Philadelphia, so you don't say I-N-G. Playing, plant, you know? You know, don't, don't, you know, we don't have I-N-G. Okay. And, you know, when we're on our own, I can loosen up. And I don't have to feel like, oh, I gotta make sure I watch what I say. So, I kind of understand if Wayne State wants to have a tailgate party for the black students or for the black community. I think it's rather nice.
And I'm sure everyone's welcome. But, you know, I think they're making it very clear that, you know, this is probably put on by a black affinity group.
New school code of conduct. Call us in. We're getting ready to talk about that. Three one three eight six eight zero three four two, three one three eight six eight zero three five one or three one three eight six eight four three three six. So, across the district, teachers were hit this year with a new code of conduct. For those out there, let me just make it frank. It made it, it makes it harder for a teacher to suspend a student for an infraction such as cursing, cursing out a teacher, cursing out another student, fighting even in the classroom. It really have to be an egregious offense like bringing a weapon or a knife or a gun to school like that for the kid to get a write-up and sent to the office and suspended. Instead, now, viewers at home, what they are doing is, for an offense that I just described to you, a teacher would have to give the child a referral, do some classroom management skills with them. They call it PBIS. Uh, with kid, I don't know what I want to say on here, what I think PBIS is for. But, uh, it was a behavioral intervention, behavioral intervention system standard. So, pretty, instead of slapping, okay, but I don't know that. So, my question to you, Mr. Smith, what do you think about this new school, this new student code of conduct? Because me, quite frankly, I don't like it. I don't like it. And I know what their agenda was to, they figure, oh, well, the student is acting up. He wants to get sent home, or the student may not understand the curriculum. There's deeper root to why they're acting up or disrupting the class. But he is a teacher. If a kid is fighting in the classroom or a kid is cursing me, and I write him up and send him to the office, and you tell me I gotta PBIS this kid, that's gonna lower my morale. That's gonna make me feel unappreciated. And it's also taking away time that should be put towards educating the kids. Now, I gotta take time out of delivering my message and turn around and discipline this kid. So, in my opinion, I see the pros of, or what they think is pros is keeping a kid in school, which is their main objective. But I think if the kid, you come to school to do one or two, one thing, that's to learn. And if you're disruptive, and if you're fighting, and you're cursing, and you're carrying on like you don't know you're in a place of business, then you need to take your butt home and let your parents deal with you. We can't whoop them. We should be able to, but we can't. What do you, what do you think about this new code of conduct?
So, for this positive behavior intervention and support, so I just wanted to, yeah, keep that on the record. But, so, I, I did, I had a chance to look at the student code of conduct, and I know
Hold on, caller.
specific area you're highlighting. And I think that I don't, I don't agree with if the student has to stay in the class and the burden been on the teacher to make sure that they acclimate the student to the classroom and their behavior. I do like the highlight of the restorative practice. And I think that is the third, that is where you engage your community, the nonprofits, the social work community, where they can support the student in a way where they're not just excluding them from their education. I mean, and it makes me think about, like, just some of the homes that some of the children come from. It's, you know, them getting to school is a path, is a journey. And I know that is not something And I know that is not something that teachers um are necessarily, they should have to deal with. Um, but, you know, that's just life, you know, some of these kids come from, you know, very traumatic experiences and they're just trying to express themselves. Um, and I think removing them from class, but prioritizing their education should be, uh, it's to stay in place. Um, but not keeping them in that classroom to disrupt twenty-eight other kids.
Because you know what I found, Mr. Smith? A lot of times I hear parents chastise their kids in the school. They'll cuss them out or they'll take them in the bathroom and take their belt off and tear the kid up. And the kid act like they got some sense for a day or, for a day or two. But I said that to say, that's how they respond to bad, you know, that's how they, that's how you get results. Because if, if in order for me to act right, my mom knows she has to take her belt off and tear my behind up. If a teacher comes to me and is talking nice and trying to use P B I S and all these restorative practices, I'm liable to look at her like, you know, this is a joke. Like, are you kidding me? Like one of those taking kindness for weakness types of things? Because even without putting your hands on a student, I can't be Mister Friendly when I'm trying to get a group of eighth graders to walk on the right side of the hallway or to clear the halls or to stop talking during an assembly. You know, I gotta put some bass in my voice, I gotta get, get nasty with them sometime and it, unfortunately, it seems like that's what our kids respond to because that's what they're getting at home. So me personally, I go back to say it again. I think this new student code of conduct is a joke. Uh, let's take the first caller.
Caller, welcome to the teacher's lounge. How can we help you this evening? You're talking to Mr. Shannon Smith.
I hope you don't mind me calling back. I love this interactive uh conversation though that I can respond so quickly. Uh, the code of conduct stuff, uh, we do even let uh students behave based on their experiences and what's going on in the world. And put uh exact attention upon them, I don't think is the appropriate rhythm. I, I, I just don't. Uh, you kind of dismiss restorative practices as a joke? They're not, they didn't prove them to be very successful around the world, by the way. We need more restorative kind of practices, uh, in our public schools and all that. And also wanted to tell the candidate there, you know, we live in eighty percent black cities, so we're not minorities. You've used that three or four times. That's their pride, take on it. On the world state, we make up the majority of the world. So, you know, when we use terms like that, I think black people and students automatically start feeling like, oh, we're really not all of that and, you know, black lives may not matter, all that kinda stuff. But you call these affinity groups when they have black tailgate parties and white graduation ceremonies. But you know what? I think it needs to racist, like the white race, just like in the last year, two youngsters, two black youngsters, uh mostly going into the front porch that they got lost and were shot at. Remember just recently, a guy got off the bus, got lost and shot because they were, they thought they were in a wrong neighborhood, these white people. So, it's like this dynamic that's going on, the all-black, the uh state this place, we white and this is our place. So, that kinda dynamic doesn't benefit the overall uh population of all people. Uh, not necessarily, we don't have to love each other, but we have to have enough decorum and respect for each other to walk down the street uh with each other, to go to restaurants if you want to with each, you know, with, we sit next to a white couple. Uh, but this black business and this white stuff over here, to me, is supporter of white races to fight.
I, I don't want you, hold on, hold on, don't, don't, don't. Caller, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna challenge you on something, caller. Uh, you said I dismissed restorative practices as a joke. Let me ask you, well, let me ask you this. Uh, was restorative practices around when you were at school or did, or did you guys get the paddle?
Um, the paddle only had left by the time I was in elementary school. But I had a couple of experiences from my father, but it only took one time to, uh, but I always
But that's luck, that's, well, you lucky to even have, have a father in the hall. Uh, do you think kids, do you think children of this generation are more respectful or disrespectful?
I'm surprised they're uh not even more disrespectful considering the world we live in and what they
So they're more dis- so you would, so you would agree that they're more, you would You would agree that they're more disrespectful than they were a long time ago? So that's where I'm trying to get back to. I believe that they took
They didn't create this mess.
Oh, well, I mean, well, you can't, well, that's, okay, maybe, maybe the child didn't, but they're still a product of their environment. And what I'm getting at to is, when we stop being able to, uh, you know, I said, take a village to raise a child, it used to be a time where you could pull someone's kid to the side and chastise them when you caught them doing wrong and straighten the kid out. That's when, that's when, that's when we had a stronger community. That's when children were more respectful. That's when you had, you didn't have all this teachers getting cussed out by students or students being so bold that go fight in the classroom or so bold that they'll even stab or kill somebody in the classroom. I think it's because they took the paddling out, they took away corporal punishment, and then they start with all of this restorative practice. And P B I S, yeah, it sounds good on paper, but if you dealing with a kid that's, that's going, suffering from PTSD or, or just comes from a, a bad upbringing or bad home and how they get chastised at home is the complete opposite of P B I S or restorative practices. They're gonna look at you like, man, please. And they're gonna take your kindness for weakness and they're gonna run all over you.
What do you think about that, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so there, just a few comments. I just wanted to just, uh, just respond to the gentleman on the law about this affinity group thing. Um, I don't, I don't mention, I, I understand that Detroit's population is eighty, eighty-five percent African American. Um, but in America, we represent about fourteen percent. Um, and, and when we go to school in Detroit, we are so used to being in schools that are ninety percent African American. And when we go to universities like the University of Michigan or like Wayne State, we see that that pop, that percentage is, is flipped. Um, that's what I mean. And then also, when I mentioned the black affinity groups, I will, I will pretty much guarantee you that all of these initiatives, the black tailgates, the black graduations, these are initiatives being pushed by those groups. Uh, they wanna see that. They wanna empower themselves. Black people wanna empower themselves. Um, but then also, um, just to push back and challenge on that a little bit, um, if me and my friends who are all African American pull our money together and start a, a fund specifically for minority businesses, how, I don't, I don't really see the racism in that. I see that as us understanding that we haven't been supported in a way that we should have by the masses and we need to support ourselves. Um, and then also, just to go a little bit into just the restorative practices, um, I do think, you know, children nowadays are, they are different. They're growing up a lot faster. Technology has a hand in that. Um, but I think our education system should just evolve beyond, we should really support our teachers in educating the children, but then as a system, leverage our external resources such as counselors, such as social workers, such as, you know, those health and human services, social services organizations that are available to their families to support them in that way. Because you're right, there are students that are coming into the schools and the classroom with so much of a burden on them, you know, hungry, whatever, you know, there's so many issues. I think it is up to us as a community to identify and support that. That does not excuse them acting out in class. Um, but just understanding that that's not the majority, that's usually a, a select few. And we need to make sure that we support that select few because, um, you know, and what that translates to is us letting down that, that person potentially being on that path from, you know, the, the, you know, the prison pipeline, you know? And I wanna make sure that we prevent that from happening. Um, you know, I've had too many family members go down that path in depth um, and, and feeling like, you know, I could've supported them or I could've given them the resources. And I think as a community, um, we just gotta take the accountability and do such.
I, I appreciate, this is a hot conversation, but we wanna get the viewers, the voters involved in this. Caller, welcome to the teacher's lounge. Thank you for your patience. You were speaking with Mr. Shannon Smith, school board candidate for Detroit Public Schools Community District. This is your caller.
Praise you one more.
Praise him. How are you, sister?
I'm calling to let you know that that student, that Mr. White, is outstanding. Because I said on your show many times, we need the counselors in schools. You can't get around it. The teachers are not trained counselors.
Right.
We need those counselors. That's where the teachers, they can help that teacher out. Don't be dismayed because the teachers and the counselors have to work together to educate that child. They're not responsible for the environment they come from. They can't be rid of you because they don't have a father or sometimes a mother or neither one in the household because they're working. So, we can't, we gotta work together. Beach Shore is a unique place. You gotta have a special place in your heart to teach. You gotta love it and want to do that job.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you said that, caller, cuz I wanna, I wanna ask you a question, caller. A lot of time, parents like to blame the teachers for their child's poor academic performance or the child's citizenship, you know, they'll say, well, he didn't act like that at the last school or, or he got all As and Bs at the last school. Caller, and, and you too, Mr. Smith, I wanna know ultimately who is responsible for how a child behaves and how they perform academically and citizenship-wise in the classroom?
Percentage-wise, that do not happen. If you have an outstanding student and they come to a teacher and those grades change, something is happening in that school. You know it and I know it. Every teacher have a different method or uh system of teaching the child.
Right.
We gotta have teachers with moral character as well as students. Now, if you don't have a teacher that has no moral standards or know anything about social life, that's not a good teacher. If they don't know about the environment that they're teaching in, that's not a good teacher.
So ultimately, you're saying that he is up to the
The call of duty and the pride that that child is at school. It's just needed in this area because some of them don't have that. It's not the child's fault nor the teacher, but the teacher is the adult. And they have to take responsibility.
Uh, thank you for your call, caller.
Thank you so much, caller. Do you have to keep this?
Yeah, uh, I, you know, ultimately, I, I think, you know, going back to this takes a village, I think it's, it's all of our fault in that, in that matter. Uh, uh, you know, we need to support the teachers when they need the support. Um, if I see a student who's out during school hours, um, just as a, a resident of Detroit, I should probably stop and ask why. Um, and we don't, um, you know, this is just where we are in our society. Where we, you know, we feel like we don't need to care about the thing we really should care about as far as our community, like not my problem. Um, and I, I, you know, ultimately, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, my, my father was really big on is that it does take a village, you know, like my success is not my own. Uh, my success was the culmination of everybody who supported me, everybody who poured into me. Um, these are teachers, uh, you know, counselors, um, you know, those who helped my mother out when we didn't have food along the way, those who let us stay with them when we didn't have, you know, along the way, this whole process, these people who supported us. And so, I, you know, I think it's ultimately the village, you know, and I think we kind of, we disconnected ourselves from the community. And I do think some kind of devices, technology, we're connected through social media, but we're not really connected as a community. And, and now we even in our school system in Detroit, you have a block where there are ten houses on the side and the students on that block go to free their schools, like some of the new reality in Detroit. And, and how, you know, what type of community do you have that where kids, and there may be ten kids on that block or in the same grade and kids talk about the, the same curriculum or same tools they go to before the parents don't have that support system amongst them to hold each other and their own children accountable. I just think, no, really, it's the, the core to rebuilding our communities is the education system. But we have to do weekend as residents and community members to support uh those who build up our education system. Um, give back to paint, go and paint, uh, you know, the walls in your school and your neighborhood. Go and give a bottle of water to the school in your neighborhood tomorrow. Um, I mean, that's the start. Um, these are things that we can do that I don't think people realize and, and support our community.
I'm gonna take our final call for this evening. Caller, welcome to the teacher's lounge. You were talking with Mr. Shannon Smith, candidate for school board. Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I'm pressing the end of everything. And I wanted to say that policies dictate a policy conditioning. Uh, and I wanna know who's getting the contracts for the water filters and the solution of the water. Because that we, wouldn't the board members know who's getting the contract? Cuz somebody is property while these policies are conditioning. Thank you for taking my call.
Excellent question. Thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, they just decided that, um, at the board, special board meeting and, um, I, I honestly, I'm not sure who they were awarded that to, but I know the board just, uh, voted to approve, uh, the two point five million dollars that, uh, Dr. B D arranged for the filtration systems. Um, I'm not exactly sure who's going to be installing these filtration systems, but I do think that's important. And, and that's something that I even think our real estate, uh, that DPS has is in making sure that we can really support minority developers, minority contractors, uh, you know, minority cars. I mean, this is a city, um, that really does need to invest in itself. Um, and this is one of the ways that we can do it. Uh, but I'm sorry, I don't know who was awarded that contract. So, we do have another call.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do, let's do Dunks of the Week. Let's do Dunks of the Week.
We're gonna do Dunks Cap, but the Dunks of the Week, this is a new segment that Brother Donovan does. We always talk about how great teachers are, but you know, now and then a teacher just totally loses it. Mr. Gardner, please.
Okay, Dunks of the Week is going to the Horizon Science Academy in Lorain, Ohio. So, this school has a ban on dreadlocks. So, they asked the little girl, why are you so sad? She said, because they didn't like my dreads, and she stopped wiping her tears. So, a few weeks earlier, another charter school, um, they had sent a policy home to the parents that proposed a ban on Afro puffs and small twisted braids. It too quickly apologized and then withdrew their wording. It is two thousand and eighteen. And folks are still telling black people how they should and shouldn't wear their hair. They still want us, they still want our children to be Europeanized to the point where we can't even wear dreadlocks.
And that was a black school. This was a black community school that did this. What do you think about that?
Horizon Science Academy.
With the bans on hairstyle, what do you think about?
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, the, the hair bans that I've been reading about just nationwide are, are pretty ridiculous. I mean, that's, that's, it's, it's, it's really, it's assaulting to culture, um, and particularly our culture. And so, um, you know, braids and dreadlocks, the bans on those are, obviously, they're specific to, uh, certain populations and I just think they're really unfair.
I know, I braid my daughter's hair cuz it's easy, you know? Get up in the morning, she's done. You know, it's the ease of it. It's just great. It's just terrible that, it's just disrespectful. Well, um, Junior, are we ready? Um, we are, I'm looking at time.
We got some more then.
Okay, we're gonna keep going until Junior tells us not to. So, you know, okay, Junior, just, we're family here. We're done. We will see you next week on the teacher's lounge talk show. Our special guest is Democratic candidate for Lieutenant Governor, Mr. Garland Gilchrist. Get your questions ready, phone in because we are gonna get this young man in Lansing. Yes, we are. We wanna thank you so much for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks for having me.
You have my vote.
Thank you.
You got my, you got my vote.
Thank you.
And everyone out there, Mr. Shannon Smith for support. Thank you so much. We'll see you next week. Garland Gilchrist will be here next week. Yes. Yay. Oh, God, it's a beast.
Great show.
Well, you know, we're trying to spark some controversy.
We did it, uh.
And Shannon, I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
You got your vote, babe? You got your vote, baby. I got a feeling you're gonna win, sir, I got a feeling you're gonna win.
All right. I gotta do some more work on the website, have a little picture area and whatnot.
I'm smiling.
Yes, you are. All right.
Thank you. Oh, God, this, oh, we always say, will you come back?
Yes, I will.
Please come back. Do you have, do you have the contact information for Mr. Smith?